Kim and myself and Maria and Kelly are all in the room. So we're going to go ahead and get started. You all can hear me. Can't hear at any time, let me know. But we're going to go ahead and get started with our work session this evening. The goal is to go through our board governance policies, making this change due to the fact that we have gotten rid of our management limitations. This is part of the SOFG process. So this isn't something that we're reinventing or creating. This is a part of moving us into that process. Ideally, it'd be nice if we got through everything this evening. But if we don't, that's fine. I'd like to see if we can be out of here by 7:30, maybe no later than 8 o'clock for this and see where we're at around that time. If we're close to the very end, maybe we'll just push through and finish this. For those of you that are not with me, Kim, I know you might have access to this. Jenna, you'll have access to this when you arrive. But I do have just kind of a sheet that was created by Kim that just goes through like each policy section. And we'll just go through that. And I'll just ask the question, do we want to keep, delete, or modify? And so I'll take notes for that as well as we're going through that. Be mindful if it's something that we're going to modify. It would be great to have a suggestion of that modification in the here and now so that we could make those necessary changes and add it when we talk about this again. Kim, Kelly, and I have comprised of the SOFG committee. So we've been working on this prior to you all being on the board for new board members. So this is something that we've been focusing and working on and have spent quite a bit of time just kind of going through what this will look like. So you'll hear from the three of us. If there's something I'm forgetting or I'm not putting in there, or if there's a question that comes up, they also will be able to answer some of those questions as well. Kim or Kelly, am I forgetting to add anything to that kind of this process and how we started this journey?
The one thing that I would add is, you know, we are moving into an SOFG space. There was a draft that we looked at, kind of, I think, for formatting, but it wasn't as though we took 100% of their words and said, let's script it to Des Moines. In fact, there's a lot of, a lot of language that is actually our current policy manual. So we just were kind of reshaping, reframing to align with our move into a new government structure.
And I would just add that if in the elimination or transition away from management limitations to our guardrails, if the superintendent sees that he would like to maintain any of those line items, the management limitations, there's always an opportunity for him to create a district policy. So just informing the public that there are two different sets of policies. There's district policy and there's board policy. So the district policy is developed and maintained by the superintendent, whereas the board policy is created and maintained by us, the board. So if at any point the superintendent wants additional policies, there's always an opportunity for him to add those to district policy.
Yeah, thanks for mentioning that, Kim. And I just want to make sure for those that are in the room heard that too, is that there is district policy and then there is the policy that we have. And then anything in management limitations that the superintendent would want to put in district policy, that would be, you know, at the preference of the superintendent, and the superintendent is able to do that. So, Kim, thanks for reminding us of that and bringing that up too as well.
And may I ask a favor? I'm sorry I'm not in person this evening, but could you share with me who's in the room tonight?
Yes, yep, I sure can. I've got Ms. Maria is with us. I've got Ms. Kelly. And then I've got Samantha from the Des Moines Register. And online, is that right? And then online, Cindy just joined us. We've got Jenna. And then yourself are online with us as of right now.
Okay, thanks so much.
Uh huh, you're welcome. Hi Cindy, welcome.
Hello.
Cindy, we're just getting started. We're just going through the actual board governance policy, the one that's updated June of 2022. And we're just going to go section by section. So we're going to start with Section 1.0 goals. And we're just going to say keep, delete, or modify. We had one board member that's not with us that had some questions that Kelly has for us. And we'll bring that up when we get to those questions. This is also being recorded. So for board members that aren't here, they can go back and review the tape too of any information that they missed this evening. And Cindy, feel free to hop in too as our coach, just to jump in with anything as well. If there's a questions brought up or if there's something that we failed to mention, if you would hop in as well, that would be appreciated.
I will do that, thanks.
Okay, all right, thank you. We're going to go ahead and get started. And we're starting with a policy item 1.0, which are our current board goals that we have. I would ask, would we keep, delete, or modify?
I would keep.
Keep, okay. And I would like to add that, you know, I've sent emails about still having a goals conversation and progress measures conversation with superintendent team. So be mindful of that. These are our current goals right now. So I'm hearing keep.
Yeah, I would, I would agree, keep. But with the caveat that we know that the team is currently reviewing these goals and that they may be coming to us, to us with proposed possible changes.
Yes. And Jenna? We will.
Sorry, I'm here. I would agree about keep with Kim's caveat, it's fine.
Okay, all right, perfect. So we know we're keeping them, but we also know that there's going to be future conversations on our goals. So we will make sure to do leave note that. Next section is 2.0, our guardrails, keep, delete, or modify.
Keep.
I was wondering on two, guardrail two, number two, we have the word unaddressed. And I wondered if perhaps compromised, would it make sense to consider?
So the superintendent shall not allow the social emotional learning needs of marginalized students to be unaddressed, you serve in compromise?
Sounds correct, yeah.
Would that change the meaning of the interim guardrails or the interpretation of the interim guardrails? Since we just went through that? That would be my concern is just with the staff. Unless there was something that they brought forth to us that we're like, ew, we did something wrong and we want to change language? So I don't know, is there something that you think would give us different results by saying compromised versus unaddressed?
I wanted to think that the word compromised entail that everything that could be risked, right? When considering the emotional learning needs of students. Unaddressed does that as well. I think I just preferred the word compromised. But it's not, to me, it's not vital that it's changed. I just thought, you know, how about compromised?
Yeah, I would really struggle with making a change to the guardrails at this point. After all the work that the staff has put in, you know, we, we went over and over every single word of these for so many months. And yeah, I would really struggle with a recommended change at this point.
I think that if we're not going to change it, then let's just move on to.
I'm, yeah, I'm fine with keeping it. Jenna, I know she might be transitioning in here, but I don't know if she can, if she wanted to chime in at all.
I hear what Maria is saying in the sense that I feel like she's trying to, trying to think about maybe being more like proactive versus retroactive is kind of what I feel like those two words mean to me. But I also feel like that, I feel like, you know, we have gone round and round about this and I don't, I don't know, is this the space to be discussing that? I guess is probably my question.
And I agree that this would create probably some work, additional work for interim guardrails. And I do, I mean, I do acknowledge that lots has been accomplished already when it comes to that. So is that a major suggestion or is it a minor?
Okay, all right.
And I'm good with it.
Okay, you're good with it. Okay, so are we good with keeping this then? Kim, Jenna, keep. Kelly?
Yep.
All right.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. 3.0, this is delegation to the superintendent. Do we want to keep, delete, or modify?
And so this used to be, I'm trying to remember, under which section? Was this section Board Management Delegation 3.0?
I believe you're correct. Let me look at my other copy.
Think so. So just to kind of reference you back to, this is, if you were to look at the current policy. Should be taking us back to 3.0.
I would just like to lift up some of the areas that we had discussed during our committee meetings that we had intended to collaborate with the superintendent. Under the old unity of control, for example, 3.1. And let me just reference the new location. So it would be under 3.5 unity of control. On the redline version, you'll see a note that we wanted to collaborate with the superintendent regarding line item two. So 3.5.2, we had identified a time of exceeding 15 minutes. That's what it's been in the past, but we felt that it was important to discuss what the superintendent and his team felt was an appropriate amount of time and resources in this area. So there's, there's some areas throughout the document where we intended to have that collaboration. And this was one of those, one of those areas.
Kim, can you, and I'm sorry, because the redline version is, I don't like redline versions, because I'm trying to find the 3.5. Can you direct like me?
So it's the old 3.1 unity of control. So on the original, our original board governance policies, 3.1.
3.5, it's not in my.
The new one is 3.5.
And I don't have.
Oh, you don't have.
That's why I'm saying, I'm looking at a total redline version. And I'm like, where's 3.5? It's not in my version.
But I think you're referencing 3.5, what we have here in this, in this new, in our, the manual that we're looking at right now, is that correct, Kim?
I can't speak to what everyone is holding in their hands right now. I'm sorry. I have both, I have both documents that I'm referencing right now.
I think the, I think the document that we all have in our hands is the actual updated June 2022 copy. Is that correct, the new one? Yes. Okay. And I think Kelly does have a redline version, but we have the actual.
Most updated.
Most updated version in front of us.
That's fine.
So the old one is 3.1.2 and the new is 3.5.2.
Yeah, mine is like way off. Because my, my new, my new, a 3.1.2 says the board will develop and maintain guardrails actions that the superintendent do not use or allow in pursuit of the school system's student outcomes goals.
Would you like me to email you?
Because I thought I pulled up, that's what I thought I pulled up was what you emailed the redline version. I thought that's what we're going on. So that must not be.
Nope, even for right now.
Well, the redline version was requested by Jackie at our last work session. So I had emailed that out. But this would be the, the document that I believe Rosie provided to everyone on June 3rd.
Couldn't find it because I was like, who sent it? I didn't know who sent it.
So what you passed out last time is, Joanna, was this?
So this, so what we're going through right now is actually, yes, the updated June 2022. That's the most recent one. That's what we're going through right now. Yes.
Hi Jenna.
So looking at delegation to the superintendent, 3.1 in the June 2022 version, keep, modify, or delete?
Can we, what do we mean when we say reasonable? What does that mean?
Up for interpretation.
Correct.
Yeah.
Let me know how to get this to move. Upside down. Let me know how to move it around.
There it was. Oh, it's in.
Yeah, you need to spin it.
There's also a button in there that.
So, thanks Maria, to answer your question, as long as superintendent uses any reasonable interpretation of the board's goals. So reasonable is to interpretation.
So whatever he thinks is.
Whatever they think.
And mind you, this is talking about as long as the superintendent uses any reasonable interpretation of the board's goals and guardrails. The superintendent is authorized to establish district and/or administrative policies and procedures, make all decisions, take all actions, establish all practices, and pursue all activities. Such decisions of the superintendent shall have full force and authority as it decided by the board. So when I look at reasonable interpretation, it's a reasonable interpretation of our board goals and guardrails as what the process we just went through last time. When he did that interim guardrails, that was his reasonable interpretation based off of the guardrails that we had. So that's how I read that.
Got it.
Okay.
So we keep, I say.
Very good. 3.1, keep, modify, delete. Kim?
Yeah, I, I believe we keep, but would like the board leadership to have a conversation with the superintendent on whether or not that is a reasonable amount of time.
So you're just talking about 3.1 right now, correct?
Yeah, I think, I think, Kim, you're referencing 3.5. We're not there yet. So I think that's where the reasonable amount of time came. I'm actually going one by one. So I'm going to go 3.1, 3.2. But I will note that for 3.5. But no, this is just for the delegation to the superintendent.
Gotcha. And I'm sorry, it was the old 3.1 and that's why I had it in my notes as 3.1. So when we started discussing 3.1, thank you.
No, no problem. You're fine, no problem. Okay, let's go on to 3.2 superintendent's role, keep, delete, or modify?
Keep.
Three, Jenna, are you okay with keep for 3.2?
Yes.
Okay. 3.3, superintendent's evaluation. Keep, delete, or modify?
Wasn't there something that Jackie?
Yep, there was a question from Jackie that she thinks there should be a mid-year performance conversation, not evaluation. He or she should do required PD as mutually agreed upon with chair. Which, I guess, I'll be the first one to say, I don't know that I have, like, what this is saying is mentally, right? Like, that's what I feel like policy is saying. You can do more than that, should you want to. I feel like there probably odds are there will be an expectation of PD and other things from any employee that you have. But is that have to be so prescriptive as written into policy? Like, I guess that's where I come into play of, why do we have to be that succinct and to the point? I mean, unless you have concerns. But I feel like, I don't know, I've been an executive director of an organization before and it was not written in stone a policy of what's, you know, every X, Y, dot my I's, cross my T's. But I had evaluations, there were things that were written in my evaluations and expectations, but it wasn't in policy.
Yeah, and I, and I think to this is what, you know, the superintendent's evaluation is that we will always annually evaluate the superintendent. That's as a board what we're always going to do. But what has been common practice is if there, if board, if the board feels there's an issue, superintendent has done something where we feel like that's violated policy, then we do have the right as a board to, you can, you know, call superintendent out on what that policy is, board leadership can have a conversation with the superintendent as well. So there's things that we can do throughout that year that if something comes up, we're able to address it with the superintendent.
I think the way, maybe, maybe the way I'm seeing it is, or seeing or reading Jackie's question is more about providing support, not necessarily to critique, but rather to extend support, you know, during the year, as opposed to waiting for something, you know, for him to do something wrong where we address it. So, you know, I like the way she awarded it, you know, she said conversation. So just a check in, you know, how, how do you, how do you feel things are going? How can we be supportive? Or what do you need from us? Or, you know, whatever that conversation might look like. But I think I see it more as because there have been concerns. And I think that perhaps that's what she's trying to figure out. So trying to be preventive and just express the support rather than waiting for a year until we do that eval or until he does something wrong.
So I would say, and I think for board leadership, I guess I can speak to this because I've done this for a couple of years, is I always have a touch point with the superintendent often. So we have standing meetings, like right now Matt and I are having standing meetings once a month on Wednesdays on top of the agenda planning that, you know, the superintendent does with, that we do with board leadership too. So I feel like there's, the touch points happen that if there were any concerns. I guess if conversations take place at that time to be able to bring up that. So I don't know if that will suffice for that. But I know for me as chair, you do meet with the superintendent at least monthly to have conversations.
Yeah, I think help us through the redline portions of that, because there's just so much going on. Then because it says that if we have, if board members can become concerned about performance, oh, that's other than the superintendent. So board members have concerns about, I guess, yeah, is that anywhere where it's like, okay?
Can you go back to what? Because we're looking at so many different copies. What are you referencing?
The one that Rosie printed, that's like all, that's the redline. What page is that roughly?
So if I can interject for just a second, this is Cindy. So one thing to, to consider is that your monitoring conversations are formative assessments all, all through the year. At which point you have the, those forward-facing questions where you ask, how, how can we support or what have you? So just keeping that, that in mind as far as the superintendent evaluation. So the annual evaluation is the summative while your monitoring throughout the year is your formative check-ins with the superintendent. And then in, in a few more sections, you'll have that accountability and performance section around concerns over superintendent performance as far as violation of policy and some of the things that you're seeing redlined, probably in the old document are just in a different section in this document, if I'm reading it correctly.
No, I believe you are, you are correct on that, Cindy.
What section is that, that you think it's in?
We should be getting to it on 3.7. That, when we get to superintendent accountability and performance.
So we keep it then?
Yeah. I mean, just knowing that the monitoring conversations is our formative check-in with the superintendent. You have your board chair who meets with the superintendent monthly. I think between all of that, I think that would suffice. That's just, that's just my personal opinion. But I think we, I, I would say that we could keep that the way that it's written. Kelly, Jenna, Kim?
Yeah, I'm good. When I, when we get to 3.7, I guess.
You'll see a little bit, yeah, 3.7 goes in a little bit more detail of the process and the things that we would do. Kim, are you good with keeping?
Yes.
Okay. Let's go now to 3. Point four, governance management connection, reports official connection to the operational organization and its achievements and conduct will be through this superintendent. 3.5 unity of control. Kim, I think this is the one where you were referencing. Do you want to just bring up what you said again about this one?
Yes.
Okay, with us.
Oh, yeah, I think, yeah, Kim, you're okay with.
Yes.
Okay, 3.4.
I am.
3.3 real quick, because we did have.
Hold on just a second, Kim, before you go ahead.
We did, I mean, we did have a professional development expectation in here and then we redlined it. So is there, is that just because we feel like it just was never being done, so it was in their kind of wasting space anyway? Do we feel like it was happening and how do you define it? Just out of curiosity, since that was one of Jackie's questions.
Wasn't that the 360 though? I mean, like, didn't? I'm trying to just think about.
Yeah, the, the district currently is on a 45-day, someone from the district would be able to better, I don't, describe their cadence and schedule, but they're on a 45-day rotation of professional development. So you'll see in the calendar, every 45 days, the district takes a PD day. So, and professional development is something that's built into the, into the district's work.
And so you feel like the superintendent's professional development is the same as all of the district's staff professional development or?
And previously, I mean, previous superintendent had coaching. So that was kind of written in based on what his plan was. And so trying to be maybe not as prescriptive. So I don't know if that had anything to, I wasn't there when that was added, but if that maybe had something to do with it?
Yeah, because in the past, the superintendent has had a, like a 360 coach, that they've had someone to kind of lean on as they're going through the process. And I know that's previously what our previous superintendent had along with going through the PDs with the district too. Yeah.
I mean, I get it, like, if there's no, anyone can say anything to professional development, right? Like, I went to all the district things and doing my professional development, I get it. So, but I'm just also curious because we're taking it out.
But it doesn't mean it can't be done. I think that just because something's removed doesn't mean that then that's never an expectation or never will happen.
But how is it an expectation? Like, how do we make it?
I mean, I think, well, I guess, how about this? I hope any strong, solid professional will go, gosh, I really need my own PD for my own professional benefit. Odds are in connecting with board leadership that they'll be like, gosh, yeah, I could really benefit from that, and maybe board leadership would share information like that. And as Kim pointed out too, there is district-wide expectations of professional development, so. I don't, I mean, if you, I don't know, I find it, again, maybe I have higher expectations of people, but. I don't know.
You, you would, you would think for a leader who is expecting those underneath to take part in PDs, that they're modeling the way and doing the exact same thing. So I think it's probably to the point of not putting in, putting it in there, but knowing that you're the leader of the district, so you would be doing some, some sort of professional development.
So it is an expectation, you know, that we would have, right, like Kelly said, of a, a strong leader, right? That's just something that they would need to, on their own, seek out, be aware of, implement. I, I think, I am not saying that, you know, our superintendent is not going to be, or that is not, he is not a strong leader. I feel like it's, it's a non-written rule, but it's not, it's not really an expectation if it's not indicated, you know?
And maybe, Jenna, hold that as we're going through this, maybe it doesn't go under superintendent evaluation. Maybe there's another place where maybe we're talking about accountability and performance and things of that sort. That might be the space for it, so hold it.
Okay.
Okay, that might.
Yeah, I mean, did we ever, and I guess, Oning, went back to like actually doing things in the past, were we having a quarterly executive summary? Like, I mean, it is part of this also, like, I, I don't, I, I think it's important that, yes, there is the support, and also that we are setting an expectation that we want someone who's gonna come and be committed to getting better, elevating a district to be better. But also being realistic about focus, which I get, that's why we're moving in this direction. And if there's just so many things in here that are actually, were written in and not being held, like, I think that's the biggest thing that I hope we're gonna get to, is like, you're gonna be held accountable for everything that's going down here? We're gonna be holding you accountable for it, right? Like, how are we getting accountabilities? So I guess I'm curious, because there are so many things in here, are we not seeing, you know, like, you're going through here, like, we aren't really seeing all this stuff?
Well, I think some of that is why we, there was a lot in there.
Right.
Um, and this, I, I feel like this process is now saying, your accountability is walls and guardrails. And so, and there are, you know, obviously there are.
Don't get distracted by.
Right, right. Don't get distracted. Now, you know, again, that's all just kind of personally, like, those are things that you're gonna probably do as a professional, I would anticipate. I'm assuming, again, making assumptions, but, right? So I mean, if you look at, oh, and you, you look at some of them, you will go to this meeting and be there, and it's like, oh my goodness. Like, there was a lot, there was a lot in there.
Can I just interject real quick here? To, again, just, so the man, uh, some of those policies were written very specifically and to lean in, lean in more, more directly. I, I can, I don't disagree with the idea of being explicit about a three sixty evaluation for both the superintendent and for the board. However, what I would recommend is that, and, and I don't know, I couldn't tell you if it should go under at the moment. Could, that would probably be something to, to figure out. But the superintendent's three sixty evaluation wouldn't be for the board to use to evaluate the superintendent. It would be for the superintendent to utilize to, to develop, you know, to get that executive coaching or whatever they needed for, for their own professional development. And that's, so I, I would say if the board expects that, it should be somewhere, but it should not be used for the board to evaluate. The board shouldn't even really see the results of the three sixty evaluation for the superintendent, but they can know that the superintendent is using it to, to grow and receive professional development. And like I said, then, the board, I think we would also recommend as, as part of the process, the board also having a three sixty evaluation for itself as well at some point.
Right, because it's like always better to get someone in and figure out how we're gonna make them drive me better than get someone in and have it not work and they're not knowing. You know, where we don't have like a system in place to make sure that everyone's growing together.
So in hearing that and, and what you're bringing up, Jenna, does, does the board wanna see where we could put something in place?
Yeah, I feel you.
Okay, do you want to just see where we could put something in places we're going through this and see for that it's in best? Okay, okay.
That's called up in the room.
I made an hope for that. Kim, any thoughts?
No, I appreciate Kelly lifting up that, you know, the superintendent, if he is doing everything in his power to achieve the goals while honoring our guardrails, then I appreciate that recommendation on the use of resources and the allocation of said resources to achieve those goals while honoring the guardrails. So, you know, just because we say the superintendent needs PD, or, you know, that might not align with reaching the goals while honoring the guardrails, so. But the, the three sixty piece, I think, is, is a different intent than what the PD piece is. So I can understand wanting that included in a different location.
Can I just pause and ask a question? We keep saying he, he, he. Are we like talking about that? Or I, I keep wanting to say they, they, they.
I'm like, or he or she.
I agree.
Yeah.
They, they, they.
I think sometimes it's out of habit, because we're talking, I mean, even though Matt's not our, he's our interim superintendent, I think it's out of habit to say he, but he or she or they or however, but I think it's out of habit just to say it, but yeah.
Just for clarity.
Yeah. No, I think it's just out of habit.
I know, I was. We are saying, we are, he or she. Yes, he or they. He or they, they.
I think that's something actually we'll move up ahead, but I, I underline that, and I can't remember what it was, because I, I noticed it would refer to the superintendent as he or she, and I just suggest that you change it today. That's in four eight three.
I'm, I'm, I know we will get there, but I'm just noting it now, okay? So I don't, don't forget. Okay, three point five, unity of control. Kim, you had said something about, I think, board leadership checking in with the superintendent and team. Can you just repeat that one more time, please?
Yes, three point five point two, is the fifteen minutes a reasonable amount of time? And if not, what would the recommendation be? I just think that needs to be a collaborative indication of.
The new one, the, in the, in the updated manual, three point five, under unity of control.
It's not in that.
Yeah, it's not in that one, but Kim is referencing the, the piece that says, "If board members or committees request information or assistance for items not posted on the board agenda and without board authorization, superintendent may refuse such requests that require, in his or her opinion, a significant amount of staff time." And in parentheses, we have exceeding fifteen minutes or resources. We just put that number there, not knowing what that, what's the number, but she, she's referencing what would be a significant amount of time. What would the superintendent say is a significant amount of time? We just put fifteen minutes there for now. She's not stating that board leadership should have a conversation with the superintendent to see what would be a significant amount of time.
I think fifteen minutes has been the standing time.
Okay.
Not saying you shouldn't have that conversation, but it.
No, thanks, no, I, I know.
That was a, yeah, that, that was a previously worked out time. And the other thing, the other thing I would recommend is taking a look at when questions should be in, which is under number three, noon on Monday before the Tuesday board meeting. Just making sure that either everyone is actually following that and that that's actually enough time to, for them to be able to turn it around. I'm not sure, I'm, I don't know what's happening right now for sure, but just, just a thought to be mindful of, of actually being able to get the information that you all need and when, when those questions need to be in so that you can have it to, to function properly at your board meetings.
The first thing, can we start before we jump down there? Let's stay on the two, three point five point two, fifteen minutes. Because Cindy, hasn't always been fifteen minutes, like, from your recollection? Is it something that's worked on or decided upon by leadership and superintendent?
It was, it was, that was something probably in twenty twelve or something that we did with another consultant and with the whole, with the whole board and superintendent at the time to work out that whole section and, and time amount. So I don't know if fifteen minutes is a standard time or, or what, but that is, that's what, if there's, I don't recall other, other than that, that that's when that happened.
As someone who's new, can you give me an example of what something like this may be? Like, I guess my first thought is like, when we ask for the safety, or safety report, is that what this would be? Now, that is, was clearly more than fifteen minutes of someone's time, but also an incredibly big moment in our school district's history. So like, I mean, is this, I guess I'm trying to wrap my head around, what is this trying to assist with?
If it's a report or information that doesn't already exist, and that would need to be compiled. So if it's a report that already exists and just is a matter of distributing it, then if the board requests something like that, then that, that probably wouldn't fall under this. But if it's, if the board is requesting something new that hasn't been compiled before, or that would, yeah, then that, then that's what this would be in reference to.
And this would reflect individual board members too, right, Cindy? So like, you know, I couldn't just call up the superintendent and say, hey, I want this done, and it's nothing that has been done, there's no report valid or, you know, completed. And for that individual to then be like, oh, okay, Kelly, let me get that to you. Like, that shouldn't happen. If it hasn't been authorized by the board, like, I shouldn't just be able to say, well, I wanna know what the favorite meal is at Harding Middle School. I'm just making things up, right? Because, because I just want that data. So it's, it's kind of living, you know, looking at it through a lens of what we individually, collectively have, are putting in those requests and how much time that's taking, and that sort of thing.
Yeah, and we do have a process for requests for information, which is here, but just to give you an example, like, I had requested information, I think when a lot of things were happening at East, I wanted to know the breakdown of the, like, referral data based off of grade level and race. And I asked for that information, and so that was something the superintendent needed to. They probably had that information, but they still had to pull it all out to provide me with that report, and I asked, requested that information. Now, I don't know if it exceeded fifteen minutes or not, but that's just, that's information that, that's just an example of the information that I've asked for before for requests for information.
But you're excluded from this, right? Board leadership? Or does it, it'd be like just board members? Like, board leadership can ask for anything?
All of us, because we're all considered board members.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it'd be all of us. Yeah. So, this piece here, number two, talks about requests for information, so we'll talk to superintendent about that time. We're gonna work with that time, I have that noted. And it also talks about if the request is refused, there's information there about that. But then, number three talks about requests for information, and Cindy, I think this is what you were referencing about the process in which we do that.
For board meetings.
For board meetings.
You know, we don't.
I was, I was referencing them, what a, what, uh, something that didn't, about the fifteen minute rule. I think Kelly might have been speaking to the, more to the, how things are.
Oh, I thought you mentioned something about how we're currently, I'm, I must have misunderstood. I thought you were talking about something about.
Oh.
The timeframe for, for questions.
No, for, I, I mean, for receiving the agenda, submitting questions, and getting answers back.
Okay. And normally, you know, the agenda comes out, like, so the agenda for next week should come out today, normally. And so I think we have to get, we need to make sure that that is happening, because it gives, of course, board members enough time to look at the agenda, ask questions, and get those in, in a reasonable amount of time, the superintendent or who could answer those questions back. And so right now, we have requests for information regarding an agenda item. Upcoming board meetings must be in by noon on the Monday before the Tuesday board meeting. If the information cannot be gathered before the Tuesday board meeting, it will be sent out to the entire board before the next meeting. So I think more to making sure that the information for us is out there a week prior to what.
And I would, I would also recommend that we get our questions in by Friday at noon, just so that I find that when I receive the answers to the questions back on the day of the meeting, I have a hard time really looking them over thoughtfully and with enough time prior to the meeting on Tuesday night. So I think, if you, I, I totally agree with that. I think the challenge becomes, it gets Tuesday, I just looked, the agenda isn't up, and I don't always have that extra time between a Tuesday night, Wednesday night, Thursday night, whenever that is, to get them in by Friday at noon, and sometimes I take that weekend. So I don't know if then that just pushes when agendas are to be posted.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying. Yeah, we definitely have to make sure, because a lot of times the agenda gets posted, but then the attachments aren't there, or the attachments get changed, that sort of thing. So, yeah, it, all of the pieces have to be in alignment in order for everybody to be properly prepared.
Can we kind of, does anybody, I, I'm gonna throw a suggestion out there. Is it possible to highlight that section, work with board leadership and superintendent to be like, what's the realistic timeline that we can get this, like, because if we can have, you know, questions in by noon on Friday, how much time do we need to lead up to that to have agenda and all documents posted? I feel like, I don't know, at least five days, maybe, I don't, I don't know. That would be my preference, but I don't know if others would not need as much or need longer.
So what usually happens, that an agenda can be posted, but not the attachments? Why is that?
No.
They should be.
No, they should be, but like, we, I know we've had in the past before where maybe the monitoring report wasn't, wasn't included. And so then you might not be seeing the monitoring report until, you know, until later, which makes it, yeah, which makes it very challenging. So that's probably one example. If there's some type of contract or something like that, that maybe it's, it's there, but it just hasn't been put there. I think it's there. So I, I don't think the issue is the agenda being posted. I think the issue is making sure that all of the attachments that we need are put there. So I've got a circle on number three right now, as far as, I think what we're probably saying is this potentially will need to be modified. So that's what I have right now, and I have three circled to have a conversation with superintendent and probably Ms. Rosie too, just about getting the agenda out there and then making sure we have the attachment. So I've got modify on here for this, because it potentially will probably need to be modified. Anything else on three point five before we go to three point six? Anything else on three point five before we go to three point six? All right, three point six, delegation to the superintendent. Delete or modify?
I would keep.
Kim?
Keep?
Yes, keep.
Okay. Next one, three point seven. Which, if I remember correctly, we said we kept a lot of this language. We didn't really take a whole lot out here. But this is the superintendent accountability and performance. The superintendent is always that person accountable to the board of directors for operational achievement and conduct. And so we, we kept this language. Do we want to keep, delete or modify?
Keep.
I can't find any of this myself. I can't read.
You know what? It's, that's why I'm.
I'm in here though, and I don't see it anywhere. Is it in your notebook?
Yeah, three point three.
Oh, three point three. I thought we're three point seven.
Okay, but it's.
So it's three point seven, that's okay. Wow. So it's, no, you're right. So it's three point seven in the updated June twenty two version. But if you're looking at the old one, Kelly.
Three point three.
Three point three.
Yeah. Thank you. Got it.
All right. So we're all going to keep this one?
Did you want to, you had mentioned the three sixty.
Yeah, that's right.
We talked about adding back in.
Would this be, let's see.
What does, what does B, hold on a second. Okay, three, seven, six, B. Maybe my brain is just not capturing. So by external report in which an external disinterested third party selected by the board assistance for board policies. Can you give me some like content so I can try to grasp things a little bit better? What we mean by that? Interpretation, please.
Okay.
In Spanish would be better. I see you were going to take them as you want to. Go ahead.
Hey, I, I, you know what? My Spanish is not good at all. It's like, na, 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 na. Okay, so I'm going to start with reading number six.
Sure.
And then just going into both A and B. So the board will systematically and rigorously monitor superintendent job performance to determine the extent to which goals are being achieved and rather guardrails are being honored. Information that does not address policy compliance will not be considered in the evaluation of the superintendent's performance. Monitoring is simply to determine the degree to which the board policies are being met, which we currently do. Right now is our moni, our monitoring and having our monitoring conversations. The board will acquire monitoring data by one or more of three methods. A, by internal report in which the superintendent discloses in writing policy interpretations and compliance information to the board. So through our monitoring reports. But now in reading that out loud, I'm wondering if that was referencing management limitations when we would get a report for compliance to that.
So I'm trying to connect both A and B and I'm having trouble.
Cindy?
Cindy is not there anymore.
Could it be only two?
I'm here.
Nope, she's, she's. No, it's okay. Cindy, I just have a question, because now that I'm reading this one out loud where it says, six, A and B is where we're at, but it says the board will acquire monitoring data by one or, one or more of three methods. By internal report in which the superintendent discloses in writing policy interpretations and compliance information to the board. Now, I know that, you know, through, through monitoring reports, we get the, you know, we used to say compliant or non-compliant, which is language we don't use anymore. We say target and on target. But we, but normally then too, in our management limitations, there would be some sort of compliance and non-compliance, which I know we're not, we, we're not doing that anymore.
Yeah, so that, um, so those were policy governance of internal, external, and then there's another thing called direct inspection. So external monitoring is rarely used, but it would, it would be if there was for some reason, which I'm, I, to be honest, I don't believe, I suppose like the audit might be, you know, that would be an external third party, but it's not really a monitoring report. But let's say you had, if you had a guardrail around some financial guardrail, you might use an external auditor for, as a, an objective third party to do an external monitoring report. So it, it gives, it gives the board the ability to do that. I don't, I'm not sure how necessary it is to, to keep that or if by not having it, that it would preclude you from, if at some point you needed to, you thought a third party look at something would, would be worthwhile. I don't think it precludes you from doing that or adding it back. But I, yeah, I can't think of a time that it has been
Is it aligned?
Used.
She, Cindy, Maria asked it be aligned with SOFG.
It was, it's aligned with policy governance, which SOFG is kind of a more distilled version of that. So probably, I don't know if there would be a time when a guardrail, depending on what a guardrail is, that might be an option. Probably rare, but possible.
Yeah, I don't know if we need, I'm thinking about, I'm thinking about, we would need it. I mean, we did, we always put it back in there, but.
Whatever you guys think.
Kim, any thoughts on that one? On B, if we need that or not?
Any recommendations?
Well, I, the only thing that comes to mind is as we were creating the guardrails and recommendations of the interpretation or the superintendent's interpretation of those guardrails were coming up. You know, there were, there were times in which the questions of what data to use were definitely a prevalent part of the conversation. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to limit, limit us to not allow an external if we felt that there was a better way to monitor whether or not we were honoring those guardrails.
The caveat is that, that it's still the superintendent's interpretation that the third party has to monitor for compliance with. Just know that.
Okay.
As you're thinking through. The, the third party doesn't get to change interpretation.
Yeah, for, you know, using, you know, currently we're using some panorama data or we will be using panorama data to monitor. It's not, it's not an external, you know, it's an, it is an external survey that we get results from.
That's not the same thing.
Right, right. I'm, I'm just, again, I just don't want to limit us because the question of what data to use has been a hot topic around the guardrails, so.
Okay, but that's not, yeah, that's not what external, you can use external sources for, for an internal monitoring report. This is an external party doing the mo, doing the report to the board instead of the superintendent.
Not a tool.
So, so I'm thinking specifically our first guardrail regarding anti-racism. You know, if we decided that there, we needed to have a consulting company come in to determine whether or not we were, we were honoring that.
Using the superintendent's interpretation. That, the, the superintendent always interprets. So it's whatever the superintendent's interpretation is. And it would, yes, so then you could have a third party come in to see if you were on, if, if the district, if the, if the interpretation of the, the reasonable interpretation was, was that, was being met.
Right. So the example that you gave a moment ago was the audit. So we would have potentially an external auditor come in and validate that what the superintendent's interpretation of our finances is, was aligned. Correct?
Yep.
Okay. So similarly, you know, we, I wouldn't want to prohibit us from having an external company coming, come in and determine whether or not the superintendent's interpretation of anti-racism was aligned. And again, like, I'm, I'm thinking really outside of the box here. I'm not, I can't even give you an example of, you know, a company or a, what that would look like, but I also don't want to limit us on having something like that in the future.
So essentially having it doesn't mean, I mean, it's been there for, to be honest, that policy was there. Well, before I was on the board, we rarely if ever used it. It doesn't necessarily hurt to have it there. It's there to use if you choose to at some point or need to at some point.
We could add it.
Yeah, so, so, so if we got rid of it, you can, you can add it. You know, if you need it or you can leave it and just say it's there in case we may ever need it. We don't have to worry about going through the motions of getting it added. So it's, it never hurts to have things. I mean, it, it might be, it might be something we never use, but then it could be the one time we need it. And to not have to go through a process to get it in there.
Although I would say if we're going to keep it, right now it says one or more of three methods and we only have two.
Two, yeah, I see that too.
That must be. Collected. And I would say under here too, so C is in every case, the board, blah, blah, blah. And then under there, it says in every case, the standard for compliance shall be, da, 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 da. That should actually be its own bullet. So I wonder if that should be D and then renumber everything below that and then E and.
D, E. And then, and this should be that. Okay, I see what you're saying.
Is it one with one? Do you want one? Don't have one.
But yeah, there's some in there.
Some of these B in there.
Want to add one?
No, I'm okay. Thank you. Well, you know what? Yep, let me take one. Yep.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so back to this. It looks like there does need to be some modifying done. For just, I think, Kelly, what she brought up, just getting those letters changed. And then, yeah, are we good to keep that or you want to get rid of that?
I'm not going to do it either way.
Okay, I'm fine with keeping it. I don't think anyone's, everyone's okay with it either way. Thank you. Kim?
Keep.
Okay, so basically I'm going to go in and modify three point seven or have this modified for language and then the letters as well. So that will be the modification to three point seven.
Did we already talk about the three sixty evaluations?
No, that's, thank you. Do we think this would be the place to add that in there for three sixty for the superintendent? I think this might be the place, because I think.
It was in here.
Then we, yeah, then we go and see.
Superintendent collaboratively with board officers will develop a three sixty evaluation tool.
Which one are you reading?
Number five.
Oh, it is under.
I.
I, yeah. Superintendent will be responsible for developing, implementing, maintaining their own professional development plan in a yearly cycle to include, but not limited to. And then everything you should include in there, including three sixty. Okay, I, I think I've lost. So when you say I.
So it's not in that version?
It's not in this, okay, okay, okay.
Got it, I got it. Yep.
You're reading the, the June twenty twenty two one or the, the old, old version?
The one we're currently living in.
Okay. So do we want to take that language and put it?
So.
Right now.
So go ahead. No, I was just guessing. Do we want, that also comes down to like Jackie's question, which was the eval, the PD and all that. That is kind of in this, not written, a little bit different from the eval, but it also talks about everything they would be doing with regards to PD, three sixty. So I don't know if we want it all inclusive or are we kind of okay to keep it general? Because then again, if it becomes all inclusive, we are, we're making, we're having to make sure, monitor and check off completion.
Can you, can you read it?
Yeah, so it says the superintendent will be responsible for developing, implementing and maintaining their own professional development plan in a yearly cycle to include, but not limited to, leadership and management skills and cultural competency. And then it says, A, the superintendent collaboratively with board officers will develop a three sixty evaluation tool and plan of facilitation by annually to identify growth areas to assist in development of a coaching PD plan. But section one, the three sixty evaluation will measure the superintendent's self-evaluation of perceived areas of growth, need and key points. Weight against anonymous, safe and candid evaluation from others to identify gaps between. And B, the superintendent will include their own perceived areas of growth and intercultural development inventory, the IDI, identified areas in their coaching PD plan. C, the superintendent will provide quarterly executive summaries to the board of coaching PD plan progress and outcomes.
So I think what I heard from Cindy was like that three sixties are good, but used not as a growing tool. Because more of a, yeah, as a, as an opportunity for self-growth on the superintendent and self-growth for us as a board.
Yeah, we should not see the results of a three sixty of a superintendent.
And he wouldn't, and they would not see ours either. So, but it, but it does allow some level of accountability for both entities to be doing that three sixty evaluation.
I said we, or we include it in the new one, just that we left this in case we ever, you know, get to need it. Then it's there.
So do we, though, want quarterly executive summaries to the board and do we want? Because.
I would.
Yeah, I would, I would like to see something regarding the three sixty, but not, not this entire thing added back in.
So can you read just the, I hate, I keep asking you to read, can you just read just the beginning without going into everything?
The superintendent will be responsible for developing, implementing and maintaining their own professional development plan in a yearly cycle to include, but not limited to, leadership and management skills and cultural competency.
To that. Well, I think more than that, but I think, I don't know why that needs to be.
I think that was written specifically for the previous superintendent.
I don't think that we should determine what tools he uses, but I do like the wording initially. Yeah, so take it out, but not limited to. So just in, so you could do like the superintendent will be responsible for developing, implementing and maintaining their own professional development plan in a yearly cycle. Period. And then we don't have to be prescriptive of what you have to have. We don't get to see it anyway, right? Because it's not something we value.
Yeah, we don't, yeah.
But we do establish that it's an expectation. And we hope that he.
Why, why do we feel like we shouldn't have been there about leadership, management skills and cultural competency?
Do we know that that's an area of growth for that person?
Because that was, that language was geared toward the previous superintendent.
Okay, is that not something that we should?
Okay, is that not something that we should expect of all leaders, though? And should we assume that that person, that the current person does not need it?
I feel like, I mean, I don't know about leadership and management, there's always room for growth, but also cultural competencies, which is what we talked about.
Cindy?
What was the question?
About adding if there should be, if we should add the word cultural competencies in there. And.
Leadership.
Just, yeah, and leadership, if that should be a part of the language that's in there.
Um, I think, I mean, I think that's, that's gotta be a decision for all of you, I think, uh, if those are, I think you want the superintendent to fo- focus on whatever their growth areas, uh, you know, growth need areas are as determined by that 360. Yeah, I'm not, I, I think that, I don't, so it said leadership, management and cultural competency.
Yep.
Yep, and I think Kelly's got some other words that may be.
So why don't, so here's my suggestion, the superintendent will be responsible for developing, implementing and maintaining their own professional development plan in a yearly cycle to address growth areas as identified by a 360 evaluation.
I like that.
And then would it stay on there, A, the superintendent collaboratively with board officers will develop a 360 evaluation tool?
I was gonna say, but that, I mean, Cindy, I'm, I don't know about the 360 evaluation tool, but is, I mean, since it's individual to that person, is that something that, and we, we would never.
I can't, I can't remember, um, what the, what the reasoning was for developing, developing one with, it might have been to choose one, I don't know, I don't know, because I think there's various, various 360 tools.
Right.
Out there, so I, to be honest, I can't recall why that was, um, that might have been a a request at the ti- that might have been part of that as we were collaborating to, um, develop that policy, that might have been uh, brought, brought forth.
So are you saying, we will utilize the 360 evaluation tool?
I, I think so.
By annually to identify growth areas?
I think that would probably, I think that would probably work.
Say, will you just say that again, Jenna, for me?
The superintendent will identify and utilize a 360 evaluation, or will utilize a 360 evaluation tool.
To identify areas of growth.
So is that different than what I just?
Facilitate by annually, is it by annually that we want them to utilize it to identify growth areas?
Or areas of growth, or something.
So here's, is that different than what I?
Yeah, so you said part one of it, which is.
One, you're saying.
One was.
Superintendent will be responsible for developing, implementing and maintaining their own professional development plan in a yearly cycle to address growth areas identified or as identified.
In there.
By, as identified by a, by the 360 evaluation, so.
And then under that, and A, it essentially was trying to say like, uh, okay, well, the superintendent and the board are gonna work together to identify that tool, and so instead on A, I think we're saying the superintendent's gonna identify their own tool and execute this on their own, kind of, right?
But would.
I think that might say it in that, I think that might say it in that bit.
I was gonna say.
Or do, do we need to descriptively tell the superintendent?
I'm just saying, A, they're saying that you're gonna work with the board to do all this stuff, right? So I just didn't know.
Yeah, I, I think that would be kind of.
Because it goes even further, and it's like one, the 360 will then measure, like, it's very, it's very descriptive, I don't know, is there a need for that?
I think just that, I just think that language you have there for the last time, yeah, we read it for the last time, I think that's, that might be.
The superintendent will be responsible for developing, implementing and maintaining, or maintain their own professional development plan in a yearly cycle to address growth areas as identified by the 360 evaluation.
The D or A 360?
Uh, I said the, by the 360 evaluation. It can be A, B.
Well, the A is like a safe pick, but B is. B is like identified.
By a 360 evaluation?
Super.
Okay. Got it.
So we're gonna add that to 3.7, Kim, any thoughts on that language?
Yeah, I like it.
Like it, all right.
Can I ask about J on this one, too, that was squash, which is the superintendent will recommend the board meeting dates for yearly summative evaluation proceedings within the board's annual report schedule prior to each new fiscal year.
You mean, oh, one night?
Yeah.
Okay.
They got like, they got. It's J on three.
Yeah, so, because. I don't know why.
Kim, do you remember that, of pulling out that language of the superintendent recommending that meeting dates?
Um. I think we were just intending that we would follow the requirements of the state, because the evaluation is, those dates are a part of state requirements, unless I'm misunderstanding.
Yeah, I think it's because, you know, in the past it had been like the superintendent, and maybe it's because the evaluation will be different, because we're going into, you know, the model of, you know, previously it was the superintendent would provide their kind of annual summative evaluation, we would have a presentation on that. Um, then we would talk, and then we had our committee that talked, and so kind of those whole processes, and then, but that was, those dates were determined by the superintendent to determine like, here's when I'm going to give my evaluation to the board, and then, do you remember that?
Yeah, that's, yep, yep.
So in the new one, there'll be no presentation?
No, the presentations are given as a part of the monitoring process throughout the year.
Yeah.
Then it's just pretty much, we just know what the dates are based on state law that we have to have.
We have to have it all wrapped in all by a certain time.
And likely the superintendent's contract.
Yes.
Yeah.
Will there still be a committee?
The only committee is the compensation committee.
The compensation committee, though?
Yes. What are you thinking?
I don't, I'm just asking, I'm not.
God, see over there, like, what are you thinking, I like said, the well, what are you thinking over there?
Um, just out of curiosity, will our interim go through this process, or will this process the first time be with a new superintendent?
It will be with the new superintendent.
Okay, so we're talking like two years now.
We are. Yes.
I didn't think so, but I just wanted to.
Yeah, everything we're doing now is gonna get us ready for, yeah, well, we'll get us ready for that new superintendent.
Think about.
Sorry, you gave it back, Jenna?
I'm good, thank you.
I swear. No, I swear to me, sure, all right.
That goes on in my brain.
Okay, let's, let's see, um, let's see, we, I don't have time to post the notes. So we'll add the language that Kelly typed there for me, and so we're now gonna move on to.
Wanda, can I just go back? We are, we are still going to be evaluating the current superintendent, the interim superintendent. Using, I, I, I'm surprised, I guess, to hear you say that we're not using this tool for the interim superintendent.
Well, in the conversations, I mean, and I'll talk to coaches and refer to AJ, but I had asked this question, and I don't know that we do, there's not going to be.
Okay, so just get clarification on that, I.
Yes, let's just say, let me just leave it there, I'm gonna get.
Perfect.
Let's leave it there. Yeah, I'll get clarification on that, for sure. Next is 4.0 governing, we're going to 4.1 governance commitment, it just says Des Moines Public Schools exist to improve student outcomes, the Des Moines Public School Board of Directors exists to represent the vision and values of the community, we're good with keeping that language?
Okay, sorry, what, what are we talking, 4.4?
No, this is just 4.1, this is, it's just a blanket statement.
Eliminating the entire thing?
No, it's just the, the blanket statement of saying that we exist to improve student outcomes, and that the Board of Directors exists to represent the vision and values of the community, which is what we've been saying all along. Keep it.
Keep.
Okay.
Hey, just to interject real quick and take you backwards for a moment, back to that 360 evaluation and the superintendent's professional development, there probably does need to be something in there, and I'm not exactly sure how explicit it needs to be, but just referencing that, executive coaching for the superintendent will be resourced appropriately, or something like that. Um, I think giving indication that, you know, it's that the, that that would be the support um, for that growth.
So it wouldn't necessarily be executive coaching, it would be whatever is recommended, correct? Like, executive coaching is just an example of one?
Uh, any type of coaching that a superintendent needs.
So just stating that we would fully fund whatever's, whatever recommendation?
Um, I think she said appropriately sourced, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Appropriately resourced. Yeah, so if you wanted to say, uh, professional development, but mo- most superintendents are going to have an executive coach that, that assists with that professional development plan.
Got it. I'll make sure to get some of the language there for that. 4.1, we're good. 4.2, uh, the board performance. Board will monitor its process and performance, self-monitoring will include comparison of board activity and discipline to student outcomes focused governance framework, the board will discuss its processes and performance quarterly. And this is in reference to this, this self-evaluations that we currently do right now, which we will be doing one.
Okay, we're on 4.4, you said?
No, 4.2.
But that would have been.
Uh, we, that's a new one, because I don't think we had anything.
No, we did not.
That's correct. You actually had it in, um, 4, 4.4, number six. It's there as well.
Okay, that's good, I'm good with that.
Okay, we're good with that. So go ahead.
Um. You might want to look at 4.4, number six. Uh, and, and either move some of that language to 4.2 around board performance, it, it did already reference the student outcomes focused governance framework. But you also want to monitor your performance per these delegation and other, and your board guardrails, all of your governing and delegation policies as well.
So, 4.4.6, you're saying is also our governing, or.
It's a board will monitor its processes and performance.
Yeah.
Self-monitoring will include comparison of board activity and discipline to governing, it should be changed to governing and delegation policies and to the student outcomes focused governance framework, the board will discuss its process and performance quarterly. So you might want to move that.
Cindy, so are you saying move that to underneath the 4.2 board performance?
If you, if you want a separate policy section for board performance, I would put everything that involves board performance in that section.
Okay. So I'm gonna put a note.
So yeah, we have it in there twice, so we could actually, it looks like the same language, can't we just strike it from 4.4?
Yeah, I'm, I'm putting it under six to move it under.
It's not all the same language, it has additional language in 4.46. Point six that you're gonna want to add to 4.2, but I would put it all under one section.
Okay, so it's just a matter of making sure, just taking number six and putting it in at 4.2. Because it's almost the same, there may be a few little semantical things.
Not semantical, it's about, also, it's not just about the student outcomes govern, focused governance framework, it's also the, the delegation and and governing process, or governing process. Which, the govern, governing policies and board guardrails say, it says that you should be monitoring your performance against those in the framework, so technically, yes, but it, it's it's probably worth pulling out that you should be monitoring yourselves against those.
So then just strike it in that section.
Take the language from six and put it into, to 4.2.
To. Yes.
Okay. So 4.46, moving that language to 4.2. Everyone's good with that? Okay, just making sure. 4.3, board and guardrails, uh, for the board, the board shall operate within the board's role as defined above, and the board's operating procedures as defined below, the board, either collectively or through the action of individual board members, shall not invest less than 50% of its minutes each month into monitoring student outcome goals, perform or appear to perform any of the responsibilities dedicated to the superintendent and violate any board adopted policy or district procedure.
How are we, how are we tracking this? How are we gonna be successful in achieving and holding ourselves accountable for this?
So, part of the work that Rosie will be doing, will be doing time use evaluations, so we'll know from those reports, like, how we're spending our time at board meetings, that, that will be the purpose of that.
What, can you give me an example of what it means to perform or appear to perform any of the responsibilities allocated to the superintendent? Like, what would be something that we would?
I'm gonna go make a business deal with whatever Meredith company to say, you're gonna provide our books for our, for our kids.
Okay, got it, so I mean, that's very, it's very drastic, right?
I mean, it could be, I mean, yeah, it could be some pretty subtle ones, too, but, yeah, I mean, don't pretend to be that you can make decisions on behalf of the district.
Okay, all right, so we do have a plan to monitor the time. And we will have a plan to like, make sure that we're aware, so we're not failing at this all the time.
Yeah, and Miss Rosie is currently in the board support cohort right now. So those things, I know she's either learning, or they're coming in that process for her, and it'll be a part of what I'm sure she's gonna be doing for practice as well.
Okay. The other two, like.
The other two, like, you know, or that last one especially, violating any board adopted policy. That's in our, when we do our evaluation, like, we talk about that, is there a policy written and are we abiding by that? And we evaluate ourselves, that's a question we ask ourselves in the value to process. Yeah. So we keep it. Keep it, if, as long as we are guaranteed to have a plan to achieve it.
One more, so.
I like to get A's.
To communicate. Make sure we're meeting that percentage that we're.
I'm not agreeing to something at ten sixty.
Okay, then we will keep that.
Yeah, that percentage is just the biggest clap. Is that who's gonna monitor it? You cannot do everything, you know, so we are gonna invest resources to make sure that someone's gonna monitor it and help us be successful at it?
Yes.
Cause we all have to do everything, you know?
Okay, got that, so we do that four point three. Keep, four point four, governing styles and values.
So that's in our current policy, one point one. Okay, okay, I got it then. I'll find it. No, I have one point. Which nothing changed from. Let me double check them. Oh, is it, I. Governing standards and values. Right, the only. The only thing is we'll take out that number six and move then into four point two, which we talked about earlier, because it's around our own processes or evaluation, so.
Okay.
Yeah, otherwise I think it's all the same.
I do think that one was the same.
So, reading number four, four four, so the board will orient new board members and board's governance process and be sponsored, hold on a second, okay. Okay, yes, so A, for A, uh, training will be liberally, uh, used to orient new board members, candidates for board membership and, okay, my glasses are not working well. Hold on a second, it's a zero phone. Okay, um. Training will be really used to orient new board members, candidates for board membership and the community. So, the way I understand it, we are supposed to be providing, um, this information or awareness to the community as well in regards to our board's governance, and if so, kind of similar to what Jenna said, how are we doing this and how are we holding ourselves accountable for this? And, and am I reading it correctly?
You are, and so those are the things that I think in the past we've owned up to, that we need to start getting out into our community, so if, when you'll see our implementation timeline, you'll start to see some things where we're gonna start working on getting out there yet still this year with our community. So no, you're absolutely right.
Okay. And we measure it, I mean, what the policy or what our value to tool tells us is at least once every thirty-six months.
Right.
Um, and we know that we're out of compliance.
We have it, yeah.
So, it's, we gotta go. You know. Okay. Yeah, but, okay, yeah, on the governance process and policies, I also would give you all credit for hosting the groups when you were running still, I mean, you hosted.
Yeah, and that's required.
For all of us, um, so we learned about the governance process and policies and stuff, so anyone could watch those and anyone could have attended those, right?
No, they can.
And I remember when, and they are, and I remember when you did it a few years ago, cause I watched that one, there were members of the community that were there. I think that's, I, I, I think, I think it's great that you're trying to give credit, but I think that we have to be intentional. And I agree. And I think that, you know, if we're gonna implement this governance model, I think that the community does need to be fully, completely, one hundred percent aware of how we're functioning. Cause I think that that's probably going to save us a lot of, uh, maybe misunderstandings from, you know, the community because people coming up to us and expecting us to do things, right?
I agree.
And so I think, I think it's great that you're trying to be like, yes, we, you know, you've done some work and I think that, but that was very limited. I think a lot of people would have thought, well, that's just for people that are running, you know, so.
Yeah.
No interest there, you know, nothing, no, that's just for whoever's running.
Right, I think, and I, but also want to piggyback to your point two, we should give ourselves a little bit of credit because I think even through COVID, we've been very fair with the whole virtual and, you know, having access to being able to watch us online and all those things, so we've done that. I think we also have reflected and known that we need to do better, we need to do more, which is what we'll see as we go through this process, so.
Just to get transparency.
Yeah.
I hear you on community, it also talks about board members and new board members, and I did feel like while we still have the time, we don't know what's going on, I do feel like you did all take a lot of time to try to orient us as much as possible, and so.
Yeah.
You know, I think you're right, definitely more in the community side, also though, I don't know what more could have been done with the new board members and that kind of. Yeah, no, in terms of boards, I, the, yeah, board members, I think it was, it was great. But yeah, no one has an entire day to come sit at Des Moines Public Schools to learn about how to govern this process. Yeah. Yeah. They want the short version, like, give me the very short clip notes. Who, yeah, me too, right? Yeah, I feel that.
Juana, can I recommend some modifications? The first line under A, instead of saying results for owners, let's make that, um, student outcomes.
So, with emphasis on student outcomes, not results for owners, right?
Correct, and then, um, accordingly, number two. Um, to, to the board's focus. So we have reflecting on the board's values. I think we just want to, to make that say, the vision and values of the community.
Which, okay, we're.
Number, number. Number two, um, under accordingly, the board will direct control and inspire the district through the careful establishment of broad written policies reflecting the vision and values of the community.
You know why? Okay, go to number two and the second line, written policies reflecting. Do you see that?
Yeah.
Direct control and inspire the district through the careful establishment of one, oh, written policies reflecting.
I think where you were catching us is you, you were saying accordingly, that's not the point of that.
Okay.
So under accordingly, number two, under accordingly.
Yes, that's the only number two on that page, so yes.
Okay.
Good, yep, there you go.
So the board will direct.
Rather than reflecting the board's values and perspective, reflecting the vision and values of the community.
Okay. So. Reflecting the visions and values of the community, is that right?
Good catch, Kim, yeah.
Okay. Visions. Got it, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Jac, anything else? Did you have anything else, Kim?
No.
Okay. Right, so four point four, I have the modification of taking number six and moving it to four point two, and then I have the modification, um, in the beginning, student outcomes, and then also, um, for number two, vision and values of the community. I'm making those modifications for that one. Okay, four point five, board job responsibilities.
Jenna, just so you know, in your version, there should be a number two and a number three.
What are we on?
Four, one point. On your version, it would be one point two.
Yep.
Kind of. Can we address all of Jackie's questions? Yeah, I'm watching as we're coming through to, yeah.
We didn't actually just.
To those pieces.
So looking at four point five, board job responsibilities. Keep modify or delete.
So the, the one, so one A is same language, there's just an addition of number two and number three. Number two is the board will evaluate the superintendent and remuneration, or how do you say that?
Remuneration.
Remuneration, can't say that. Based on the degree of accomplishment of the goals while honoring the guardrails will be decided. And number three, the board will approve an annual budget that aligns with achieving our goals while honoring our guardrails, establish the tax rate and improve the levies. So those are the two pieces added under our responsibilities. I don't, this is more just grammatical. At, at, end of number two, do we need, will be decided, like, the board will evaluate the superintendent and remuneration based on the degree of accomplishment of the goals while honoring the guardrails. We need, will be decided. And remuneration will be decided based on the. Oh, there you go. Degree of accomplishment, if we keep it in.
Okay, so, remuneration will be decided. Based on, is that okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anything else on this one?
So, can I just ask a quick question? One then, about all these committees and all that stuff, did you say you moved that somewhere else, or we just eliminated it from board job responsibilities under one because it doesn't need to be in here, or? One, two, like, the red lined one, they talked about like, being involved in the parks, red board.
Oh, all of the communities, we took out all those, you know.
Yeah, we took out, I read my version, doesn't count.
Oh, this one here, all the community board committee and council, please, the board chairman, appoint the board members to the, that, he's right there with all those different committees.
We took all the committees, huh?
Look at that one right there, go ahead.
We're too many versions for the.
Hey, Juana.
Uh huh.
Uh, just another gr- grammatical thing on number one, under four point five. Um, the board will monitor student outcome focused goals and guardrails and will fulfill, take out the, the board, and will fulfill any statutory.
Got it.
Oh, oh yeah, cause.
Thank you.
And also on A, I don't think, I, I wonder if it should say, rather than the following, um, if it should say, these board governance policies have been? Cause I don't know if that, because it was moved around, uh, if this was one of the things that got moved around, so it's um, cause the only following board policies are the last couple, if we're being.
So these board governance policies have been, okay.
Yeah.
Yep, we've removed, we've removed all the committees out of there.
We didn't, I thought?
Well, some of them seem a little like, I don't know if they sell fly, and it's, I didn't know if that's like an expectation of ourselves, stuff, cause I feel like it was, we had to be on these committees, right, or? Well, we could ask from the community to have representation, and so it's just an expectation that we would determine who has interest in assigning folks to those roles. But it could be like, one of those committees, for example, be like, yeah, we're not, just don't need the community support anymore, we don't need the MPS of potato. Maybe they're not needing any more, so then it's like, we have it codified, you know, policies when those are things beyond our control. This also, does this have the class? No, class not even in here.
Yeah.
It does talk about advocacy a couple of times in here though, which is interesting. So, we did end up, so we scratched all that.
We, we just have to be conscious that, again, when we're, when we are calculating our time and we are looking at spending fifty percent of our time on monitoring goals, uh, board committees should be counted in our board authorized public meetings, so it's not just um, the time we're spending at the board table, it's also including any board committee time that's being spent. So the more time we're spending in committees, the less likely we are to reach our, our intent of spending fifty percent of our time focused on students and student outcomes.
I hear, I hear what you're saying, I'm just wondering if there was like an intentional shift that we're gonna be moving away from that investment, I guess, Kim is kind of my, where I was trying to go with that.
Yeah, I, it is, it is definitely intentional to align with more focus on student outcomes. Um, many of our committees, if we look at them, they are more focused on operations and the superintendent's work. Um, and not as much focused on student outcomes.
But I don't think, and I don't know, Kim, like, we're still gonna have representation at those, I mean, if the community is asking for a representative of DMPS board, we're still gonna be there, we're not gonna be like, sorry, that doesn't align with our SOFG. Um, I, I would anticipate that we would still be present in those efforts. And does that depend on the length of time, the commitment? Cause they're not even, they're not driven by us, so that's, then I, I guess Cindy.
You have it, you already have it, if you're, you're getting ahead of yourselves on four point one, two. Um, number four, board members may serve on other boards, committees and councils because of their status as elected officials. In these situations, the board member does not serve in the official capacity as the board representative, but as an individual. I think that might speak to some of those other organizations that, um, the, and correct me if I'm wrong, cause I'm your, the, your committee did this, but, um, and I don't remember if it was in the former, former iteration or not, but, um, that seems like it would speak to the idea of of a board member being asked, or board members being asked to be on outside committees or uh, boards for other organizations.
But it's, it's my experience that when they request that you be part of a board, it's because you're on the DMPS board. Yeah, but you're not asked to speak on behalf of the board, like, when you attend, like, in Des Moines Parks and Rec, and that, like, hey, Maria, so you're gonna commit DMPS to assuring that we're gonna have a hundred kids to that, right? Because they can't, you can't hold the district and or the board accountable at that meeting while you're sitting at that table, you're not a representative as the entire, you're, you represent the district as a board member, but you don't have the voice to commit as the district, does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, so we are, we are representing though, DMPS, which is, I mean, in your, and that's what I'm saying, cause that's why they want us there. But when I'm speaking for the board. Yeah, I feel like we just got assigned to committees, cause we spend time on these committees, right? I mean, like, just to clarify, I'm not talking about being on like, a nonprofit board that I select, I'm saying that as a district, we identify, the board identify committees that representatives are sitting on, and we are assigned committees.
I mean, yeah, and, and four point talks about board committee principles too, so, some of this language you'll see in the new, in the new one. We've got four point one, two, board committee principles, which talks about board committees.
Okay.
So, you'll see.
So we'll get that.
Yes, we will get that.
Okay.
So four point five, I just have modified language for that one, so there will be a modification for that, for a language modification, board job responsibilities. Four point six, concerns about board performance, and I am positive we kept the, the most of the language from what we previously had.
It's about the code of conduct.
Mm-hmm.
We have a code of conduct too. So we don't have one currently, or we need to update one?
No, we.
Kim, did we update the code of conduct or build one?
We talked about, we talked about.
We did not build one.
There was a reason behind that though, cause we talked about it and then.
Because it's in four point nine.
It's written into the policy.
Oh, okay, that's right.
Okay.
Okay.
So, when we get to, you'll see four point nine, board member conduct. But this one, we did not change the language, so if you're looking at the old version, one point three, okay?
Yeah.
So everything is the same.
Yep.
Keep modify, delete.
Keep.
Okay. Alrighty.
And the only suggestion I have, Juana, is to make sure, and this is throughout the document, and it probably just needs to be a word search, um, is replacing um, the old language of governance process policies with governing and board management delegation with delegation, whatever you're labeling those big sections, um, make sure it's consistent through, throughout. So like, the last sentence of the first paragraph, um, it still says governance process and. It still says governance process, and you wanna say governing policies.
Okay.
Because you've changed the heading of that section, and that's what those meant.
Okay. So then four point six, I'm just gonna do a language modify. All right, four point seven, agenda planning. And then do the old one, it's one point four. We kept. Most of the language here.
I was gonna, so I'm trying to reference.
Looks like we eliminated that about, I think you called the agenda seven days, less than seven days. It says something, delete and add the joyful for.
Yeah, we had an example that kind of, that we thought we would use for, I just wanna make sure, oh, and it is in here under. Kim, do you remember, I know we talked about adding that. Oh, wait a minute, I think it's, go back. Kim, do you remember, I know we talked about looking at that joyful process from that example, we had to put that in.
Um.
Okay, so. Yeah, I, well, I don't have for whatever.
We reviewed the joyful, and it did, it would have required us to have agendas out like two weeks in advance of meetings, and it would have. Required us to change quite a bit of our processes.
That's right.
We didn't go down that path.
That's right, thank you, I was trying to remember what we had decided.
I think that's fine.
Okay.
You now call it.
Four point seven, then are we?
Thirty.
Don't think too much more.
And now, but there's an, there's an addition of off-cycle monitoring reports. Under to report that is additional to those already calendared. Written request will be forwarded to the board chair and superintendent, including the policy or policy subset number. Less than thirty calendar days prior to the regular board meeting. So that's if we were to request an off-cycle monitoring report. Do we want to do that?
Yeah, and that was actually still language we took from. Four point four.
Oh, yeah, that is.
Yeah, so we just got, we just got that language in there.
Okay.
So are we doing?
I didn't, I did not catch, are you putting back in the language about seven days, no more than seventy-two hours, the stuff that you did not replace with the joyful example?
Um, we.
No, but we, what, did we just talk about that, didn't we just talk about that in reference to having to go back? It has to do with superintendent. Cuz we just had the conversation around information and agenda, and, or maybe it was the fact that questions had to be.
I mean, that was the one, not questions, that was the questions, that wasn't, we're talking about placing things on the agenda. So no, Cindy, I don't think we did anything with.
I think if you're not going to change it completely, I would recommend you put C, D and E, or some, some version of that back in. Indicating when the agenda needs to be out, when you, when no more items can be added. Um. Because that. You don't want, yeah, that, that is just. I think that is just good practice to have, to have an expectation around when the agenda and all supporting items accompanying it, I think that should be explicit as well. Um, and that. And the board member questioning process. And that adequate, yeah, it says that adequate materials are to be provided for each board meeting. And, um, as well, so what that means also is that. Um, if things are added after that period, you're going to need to be willing to call that out as well and. Um. And potentially table whatever item it is until the next meeting.
And then C second, D's already in there, I thought. Should have questions, isn't it?
I don't think C and D or.
No, D isn't in there.
C D or E is not there.
Oh, yeah, oh, then yeah, those should all be back in there.
So, Ms. Maria, you, do you know, referencing, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read it to you.
Go ahead.
So what we, what we don't have, which might need to be, which probably should be added back in here, is it says, no item can be placed on the board meeting agenda less than seven calendar days. In advance of the board meeting unless delay in acting or discussing that item could seriously affect the operation of the district, no item should be placed on the board meeting agendas less than. Seventy-two hours in advance of the meeting unless the board chair determines that an urgent public necessity exists. And then board members who have questions about a particular board meeting agenda, item will follow one point seven director's individual, we might have something about questions already previously, but. Um, board members who have questions about a particular board meeting agenda item will follow one point seven director's individual responsibilities for a policy. And superintendent shall be sure that adequate materials are provided for each board meeting agenda item, and information will be relayed to board members at least seven calendar days prior to the meeting.
So that's in the old one, and we're gonna be replacing it? Okay. As part of.
Getting it batch in here under four point seven agenda planning.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
No, I was wondering where that went.
Oh, no, sorry.
I swear I had, that's why I'm looking at this one, like, it's a loaded one.
So are we okay with that, Kim?
Yes.
Okay. So I've got it noted then for four point seven, um. I've got a language, let's see, no, four point seven, I will modify, um, and add. Uh, C, D and E. Five point four. Okay. Um, I know it's seven thirty, I just wanna do seven thirty-one exactly to do, check in with you all, we've just got a few more to go, and we wanna keep pushing through this tonight still. Are we good? I think maybe we can get this done in thirty minutes. Twenty-nine?
Let's try it.
Wanna try? Keep going? All right. Four point eight, chair and vice chair role, and I am positive that we didn't take too much away.
So there's a question by Jackie.
Uh-huh.
Um. So, and, and maybe this flows from her question before was around the superintendent evaluation.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think there should be a mid-year performance conversation, and he, she should be required PD as mutually agreed upon with chair. And then here it comes into, to that end, can a board chair be delegated authority from the board to give feedback? So maybe that's more related to superintendent, but I guess it becomes, does the board chair take the role of becoming the voice of the board to provide feedback to that superintendent?
From understanding it right, I think that's part of what the chair's responsibilities are when. Board members have any concerns, they normally bring that to board leadership, or leadership takes that back to the superintendent.
So, and I'm not sure if she's wanting something explicit to state that, or, I, I don't know, but just lifting that up, that that was a question that she had.
And I, I'm wondering if this is stemming from just like a feedback loop, like closing a feedback loop for board about if there are concerns, like that process of. Of that.
Okay, yeah, and that, that's probably a question best addressed to her because I'm not sure what. That means, I would interpret it different, how about that? Which number are we on?
So we're on four point eight, chair and vice chair role.
Right, right, but which?
And the question that I think Jackie.
Jackie had a question, okay, yeah.
Yeah, we were just trying to figure, we're trying to interpret that question on, if, it sounds like. The, the chair making sure that maybe that feedback is given back, so. And I, way I interpret it, if there was an issue or there was getting information from the superintendent, making sure that that, that chair is giving, we didn't read what she had, I just wanted to make sure.
I could interpret it different, so she, cuz she, the question before it was around superintendent evaluation, and. Um, do any PDs mutually agree upon with the chair? And then the next question is, to that end, can a board chair be delegated authority from the board to give feedback? I assume that's give feedback to the superintendent.
Um, okay.
So. Yeah, that's what I.
That's what I'm thinking, okay.
But.
They, that's right, that's addressed in three point seven E B.
Oh, okay, then. So if an individual board member has concerns, they could take it, if it wasn't resolved, they could take that to the board chair. Versus, is that, but if, if it's not concerns, if it's just, hey, here's your kind of eval, or, you know, Duana, how you kind of, you know, you guys talk through things on a monthly basis minimum, and. Is there questions or concerns, you talk to the superintendent about that, it's not explicitly written that you're given consent to do that, it's. Right, like.
Well, if it's normally someone's brought concerns to me, then I, I would. Relay those concerns to the superintendent, superintendent would either respond and, and, and might respond back to the entire board to say.
Well, and I'm not even saying if it's concerns, like if it's just, hey, how are things going, oh, gosh, I wish I had. Love it, I don't, I don't, I can't make things up off the fly, but, I don't know, like, not concern based, but rather. Yeah, I'm thinking like, you know, I might need more PD in. Energy efficiency, I don't know, like, pick a topic, um. But I don't know, I guess I'm, I'm trying to, I'm digging too deep into what the context is, not understanding what Jackie.
Put a note to, to ask Jackie what she's asking, because I think we could spend all night trying to figure out what she's asking, so you could send that question to me so I can.
We're gonna come back to them anyway.
How?
We're gonna review these with it.
So all the changes that we've talked about, we'll go back through and make all of those, and let, and let everyone see them, but then I'll also circle back with her on this question too, um, to see if it. Just to have a better understanding, and to also see if maybe those concerns are addressed somewhere else in here, that I would be able to appoint her to.
And in, in this one, four A. Um. Three, let's see, three C. Um. The vice chair assumes the duties of the board chair in his or her absence. The suggestion was just to change that to there. Instead of his or her.
It's above, it's a. Um. In a place right above in number three, did you say that already, Maria? It's also just in the main sentence of number three too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you're saying, saying in fulfilling their responsibilities, put it in both, right?
Just make a blanket statement that all his or hers will be changed to theirs.
Yeah, and them, all of the, and, um, her or him is up there, so them, so, yes, you used the inclusive language.
Okay, so we'll be, I'll make myself a note for language changes there.
Only if we're gonna get a name this.
I, yeah.
Woo-hoo!
I've got, is it hers, I'll just make a note for myself, there, and them. And they when necessary, okay.
And in number four B, um. Third sentence down in B, uh, reason for wanting to hold the position, how you will maintain, I think it should say how they intend to maintain, or something, or how they will maintain.
We'll just have to go through another fine read.
Yeah, well.
Grammatical.
Yep, for the grammatical pieces of it, so, but I've got that.
That's one I noticed, so, there you go.
Yeah, I've got that noted. Okay, so it looks like there'll be some language modifications on here, and then I do have a note to clarify with Jackie on her question. Four point nine, uh, board member code of conduct. And I'm, and this did not change much, I'm pretty positive. We kept. What was, whoops, what was there?
So keep.
If you wanna be more inclusive with language, again, in this section, you might consider, um. Uh, there's a lot of places where, uh. Oh, let me see. Hold on. Like, for example, uh. On the next page, number five, I have the circled, um, board members will respect the chain of command, refrain from initiating discussion of board matters or matters on board meeting agenda. Et cetera, et cetera, the last sentence of that is the only exception to this board procedure is spouses of board members. Um, I don't know if there's, if, if there's other language to consider as well as spouses, like domestic partner, whatever.
Yeah, maybe partners instead, or, or domestic partner. Okay.
I'm just throwing that out there, I'm not saying you have to do it, I'm throwing that suggestion out if there's more inclusive language that the board would like to use.
No, I'm, I'm getting the feeling that we would like to use inclusive language, so I'm, I'm not taking that. I'm hearing it, keep for this, I've heard one, keep, um, anyone else for this, keep modify, delete, I mean, besides modifying language to be inclusive?
Keep. So we're.
I'm good with this.
All right, so we're gonna keep it, we'll modify some language, all right, let's go to, uh, four point one zero, directors' individual responsibilities.
Wait a minute, I'm sorry.
Uh-huh.
No, I did.
You have question on four point nine, you have question?
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess I cannot flip the page. For F. And the new one? Four nine F, what is that based on?
Which one, which number?
Four board members shall not be eligible for employment or business employment contracts with DNPS for a period of twelve months after having left the board, what is that based on?
Cindy, do you know what that's based on, where, where you, that language was put in there?
Um. I'm thinking that might have actually been there. Either prior to or early in my time there, but I think it's, I think it's to. Um. Just to acknowledge that there was no conflict or. Uh, during the board members. Yeah, I think it just gives space to, to the board members tenure and, and any employment, I, I can't speak for certain on. On that. I, I can't speak for certain on, on that amount of time.
Pretty sure that, like legislators can't be lobbyists for a certain period of time after they're out of the legislature table. Yeah, no, I mean, I'm, I'm sure there's a period of time. I just was curious as to why a year? Like specifically, I mean, did we have some issue in the past that made us consider this and, I don't know?
Yeah, to my knowledge, I'm, I'm not sure of where that, kind of where that, what that one year marked you meant.
Can we reconsider that? Can it be six months now? It's the time to reconsider.
Yeah, now's the time to reconsider, yeah, anything. Six months, six months.
Considering that, you know, I mean, we're, we need staff. What if, you know, I mean, upon retirement, we all want to work for the district, you know? We're gonna need a year and we're still struggling with, you know, staff and you gotta, I don't know, I just think a year is a long time and I think that you can have really passionate, good people, you know, that might still wanna, you know, be in the district and do work for the district at some level. We might be missing out. That's, that's all I'm saying.
My only concern would be that, you know, when you are wearing the hat of a board member, it, it looks very different than that of an employee and really ensuring that that there is space for for your previous role to, to finish and I, I would, I would struggle with making it six months.
I have no objection with six months. I, I don't object to six months. I think it's a matter of making sure that we're just in compliance. I, I don't know if there's any state law or anything that would preclude that, so I think it's just a matter of checking that. I vote for six months.
Yes, in my mind, I'm thinking about six months from a standpoint of if I'm done with the board in November and I mean, occasionally the board, I mean, the district does hire in the middle of the school year, but technically you would be eligible for the following school year because you wouldn't start until that August.
You're, you're thinking of only a 10-month position, Duana. There are year-round positions in the district, many of them.
Yeah.
And people leave the board all the time, not on cycle, so.
It's true. Um, I guess I'm, I can live at your house. I'm not, I'm not objecting to six months.
You know, the only thing I'm thinking about right now is the level, the number of people that we have lost in our district. And I wonder what that's gonna look like, you know, in, in the future. And so again, are we limiting ourselves in some way? And I, I, I think I agree, Kim. I, I think that, you know, you're, you're wearing a hat for, you know, four years or longer. But I think that also depending on that person's involvement, you know, in the community, presence in the community, people become aware of who you are when you're done, you know, and when you have a new role.
Well, and there's nothing, I mean, there's nothing that the previous board member slash employee, whatever that is. I mean, it's all about mindset perception.
Right, right.
I can't change how somebody thinks about me.
So I think, I think the issue here isn't so much how other people think of you, it's the idea, the suggestion or the perception that you may have used your position as a board member to gain employment uh, and benefit from employment in the district while you were a board member in 12 months. Sure, and I don't know that there's a magic to the 12 months, but I, um, just being mindful of, of that space allowed, um, to relieve as much of that type of perception as possible. So, um, it's less about how people view you who are in the organization and then they might still view you as a, you know, forget that you're no longer a board member or whatever that looks like, but more that, hey, when you were on the board, did you, did you apply pressure to, um, to seek employment and benefit in that respect? So that, I, I think that's the nature of the conflict, since it's a conflict of interest, under the conflict of interest policy, that's the nature of it, less than how people perceive you in a position of authority once you're off the board.
And I, well, and I think it is a subjective number. I mean, is six months long enough? I mean, six months can be long enough for some people or maybe not long enough for others. I mean, it just depends on your perception of time.
Right.
Um,
It doesn't mean that the person is interested, they're gonna apply six months, you know, right after, I mean, immediately as soon as they're, as they're done or those six months are up. But I think, you know, we go back to perception and you can't really control what other people are going to say. There's a lot of people right now that think that a lot of, you know, people in the district probably have a job because, you know, they know somebody or because somebody pushed, you know, for that person to get a job. And so, you know, perception is perception. You can't really change that.
All right, what's the consensus? Six or 12 months?
I say six.
Why don't we bring it back as a recommended change when we have the entire board present?
That works. I'll note that. Six months, we'll put it out there for language. Anything else on this one?
And you are also going to make sure there wasn't some legal reason or whatever.
Yep, I've got that noted too.
Yeah.
Anything else for, for 4.9? All right, we'll move on to 4.10 Directors' Individual Responsibilities. Keep modify delete.
I'm sorry, Ms. Donna.
Yes.
I have one more thing. At the very bottom of that, the one.
Uh-huh.
Five, your board member communication with DNPS staff. So B, 5B, if board members are contacted by DNPS staff without the permission of the superintendent, board members will follow the board policy, which is board member communication with owners, community member, and then all superintendent.
We don't have that, wow. Hold on, yeah, this, this is close.
So I was gonna, so do we have that policy?
Because we took the exact language from it. That's why that says there. So it's.
So it's, so it's right underneath. It's number six, is the board member communication with owners and community members. It's directly underneath it.
Will follow the board policy.
Oh, okay. I see, okay. Okay, so for a board or a staff person to communicate with a board member, they have to have permission from the superintendent? Is that the way I'm reading it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, has that always been that way?
It's always been our policy.
Okay. And so. Like when they advocate to us, like they go to superintendent, you know that?
I'm just saying it's always been policy. That's what I'm just saying. I'm leaving it. It's been po, that's, it's been in the policy.
Okay, so is it different when someone comes to our board meeting and speaks to us and is a staff member? Do they have to have permission from the superintendent?
Typically, they are there as community members, not as staff members during public comment.
Even though they identify themselves as staff person?
Yeah, I think it's a gray area, but.
And I think, to me, when I think about this, about board members are contacted by DNPS staff, I'm thinking more of business-type things. Like, that shouldn't be, um, contacting us or I think things that, things have lovely lights. I think things that are like business of the district, like I think sometimes, I shouldn't say sometimes as if like this happens all the time, but I think we need to be mindful of, like, we're only the superintendent is the person that we're responsible to, that we're over to, and we want to be careful and mindful of being in contact or having extensive conversations with staff where it could be perceived as we are now trying to push our own agendas or we're trying to do the job of the superintendent. And so I think you have to be mindful in those spaces. In this space, I just see it as like, oh, hey, how are you? I, I, I don't see it in that kind of space. I think being mindful of, you know, if we're going to make a decision about something and, you know, and a higher-level staff members contacting you and, and having some of those conversations that really, maybe we should just be, it should be superintendent, you know, initiating things with the board. To me, that's kind of where my mind goes when I think about that and how the per, perception of it is, that being mindful that we are not over the staff.
Right.
We're just over the superintendent.
So it's just for the sake of transparency, right? And always include the superintendent?
So they also to superintendent knows, like, what's going on, yeah. This look like board and staff are having conversations. That shouldn't be had.
Yes, that's what I had.
Okay.
For that, for that one.
Jenna got disconnected. I'm just telling her we have still, okay. All right. 4.10 Directors' Individual Responsibilities.
Keep. Thank you.
Keep.
Keep.
All right. 4.11 Board Members' Visits to Schools.
Keep.
Keep, keep.
Keep, all right. 4.12 Board Committee Principals. I know Jenna's not on, but I wanted to bring her attention to that. She got disconnected.
This was, this was just, there was a, just a general question from Jackie
Mm-hmm.
on this one, which is just that she could not find board committee descriptions. I wonder where they are at, so. But we don't we have any board, I mean, we have the one, the conferenciation committee, but it's not in policy. Great.
Yeah. That's probably some information that I can get to her. I don't know, we need to have the descriptions of them in policy, but could provide those descriptions, so.
And hasn't been determined the term of service on committees? We usually do that annually.
Yeah, normally it's like the cycle of a school year. And I'm thinking that when we, you know, do elections and everything again, that will.
They'll be reviewed.
Mm-hmm.
Are we good with, I'm good with keeping.
Keeping this one?
Yep.
Okay. All right, let's look back.
Ooh, look at this.
I know. Uh, the last one, 4.12 Governance Budget. Or wait, well, that's 4.12. I think it says 4.13, you know, it's one, one, 4.12 Governance Budget.
Yeah, a typo. That needs to be 4.13.
Oh, it should be 4.13.
Okay, it should be, okay.
And there's just a
Oh, okay.
Space that could be like wisely is on line one, it's wisely is moved down to line two and that could just come back up to the previous line.
Say that again, will you?
So if you look at, at least on my version.
Oh, I see.
Formatting issue.
Just a format.
Yeah, formatting, okay, got it. Jenna, I know you're back. We're on, um, the last one, 4.13 Governance Budget, but I just want to make sure you take a peek at 4.12 Board Committee Principals. We said keep, but I know you had asked about board committee, so just want to make sure that you take a look at that. Um.
Okay, I will, thanks.
All right. Anything, 4.13 Keep modify delete?
Good with keeping.
Keep.
Keep. Keep. All right.
So.
Right at a clock?
We are. I do have some follow-up questions that Jackie, um, that she shared with all of us. And the first two relate to the management limitations. First one is, it is unclear where certain fiduciary duties, 2.5, are going since they are stricken under management limitations. And the same thing with what happens to 2.7 under management limitations with this, which is succession. So she just wants to lift up what happens to those things, um, with management limitations being stricken. So that will be probably at a time where we have another conversation around the draft.
Probably so, and probably uplifting to what Kim brought up at the beginning about the management limitations and some of those things being housed in district policy, if, if need be, but I do note the part on succession too, though, so.
And then her last question was, what is the legal review process of this board governance document? Which we know, we came up with one issue that we know we want to confirm, um, if there is a legal.
Thing for the six months versus the 12 months.
But if there an overarching legal review of this governance document?
To my knowledge, no, but I can always, I don't, I can always see what's been done in the past or ask Miriam if that's something that she needs to look over just for any legal thing. So that's something that I can check on. All right, so those were, so we addressed her question. I think there's just one that I was gonna follow back up with her on. Um, beside that, next steps will be to get this document cleaned up and go through and kind of really go through it for some of those language things. And then we should be ready to do, um, what would be a second read of this, if I'm saying it, or a final read or just something. Basically, I'll get this back in, in, in your hands so you can see the clean version and go through it. The only other things that I'll look to is that, the legal piece of the six to 12 months and then see if there's anything else in here that needs to be on Miriam's eyes. Besides that, we would potentially be ready to, um, put this to a vote on. Yeah, probably that first meeting in August. Yeah.
Can I ask a question? Sorry, back to the board visits to school. Why did we eliminate board members are encouraged to visit any school?
Where, where are you saying that at? Say it again.
Under Board Member Visits to School, which is the old 1.8.
So it's become 4.11 right now? There was some language updates on that. Just regarding the purpose of visits and the focus that board members should have when they're faci, uh, visiting, but, uh, the policy itself still exists.
Yeah, I didn't know if there was a reason we eliminated, because one said board members are encouraged to visit any school. And I just didn't know if there was a reason, is it, like, kind of what the thought was behind eliminating that?
Um, yeah, not that, not that the, I think it encourages, we did intentionally eliminate it. We want, we, we don't want to discourage or encourage, but when you're there, we want it to be focused and intentional and, um, so I think it was not necessarily, and we didn't want to encourage or discourage.
And then what, it, Board Members Will Not Facilitate Conversations Regarding Staff Concerns. Can you, like, put that in a context for me so I understand? Like, what does that mean, like, should not facilitate, what is, like, what, what does that really mean?
So I think we just, you might, you might have fell off at this time, I think, when we.
Yeah, I did, sorry.
Yeah, because Ms. Maria just brought up this about having conversations or initiating, initiating conversations with staff members, and I think being mindful of the fact that, you know, as a board, our, we work with the superintendent, that's who we oversee, not staff, and so being mindful of initiating conversations could be perceived as we're taking our role more than just dealing with the superintendent, but we're also trying to facilitate or, I, I'm not using the right word, but kind of oversee staff, and that's not our role. And so being mindful of that, and also making sure that the superintendent is aware, because we don't want things happening where it can be perceived as if we're trying to exert our authority on staff members, and that's not our role.
So wait, facilitate conversations, are you saying like facilitate conversation, like don't talk to staff members? Or what?
I'm not saying say hi to a staff member, we know they come to our board meeting, so of course we're gonna generally say hi, but I'm, I, for how I interpret it is that if we're, when, I'm trying to think of an example.
I'm not gonna call up a staff member and say, hey, I want to do this program, I think it's awesome. Let's figure out how we can do this program in the district, and I'll help you. Like, I'd absolutely, it's not my role, nor should I be initiating that conversation with that staff member, or even talking to them and say, I think this is a great thing, like, maybe you want to look into this. I would not see that that is, I see that is outside of our scope of conversations.
Ms. Maria, you was gonna say something too.
Yeah, no, Jenna, I was just gonna say that I had asked about staff needing permission by, from the superintendent when reaching out to a board member. And so I just want, I just wanted to make sure that I understood that correctly. And so the response. They need to have permission whenever they reach out.
Like, what do you mean, like, when they're emailing us, they're asking for permission first?
No, so I, this is all gonna be to interpretation, but, so I'm not saying that when you're at a board meeting, you, they have to ask Matt permission to say hello to us. I'm not saying if you're at the grocery store and you're going by someone, that they have to call and ask for permission first. And I know that sounds silly, but I want to take it to that level to make sure that we understand what this is about. I, for me, I interpret this as things in which we're making decisions about things that impact the district. Maybe something that I want to do for myself for personal gain, whether it's through my own business or nonprofit or whatever, like, or, or vice versa, if they, you know, want us to do something that could be a conflict with the district, like, we need to be mindful that our role in relationship is with the superintendent, and that's who we oversee. We should not be having staff members call us for things of decisions that we're making to say like, hey, you know, I think that it should be this, this, and this, and, you know, I don't really like what Matt's doing or this, that, and that, like, we need to be careful of those kinds of conversations because it could, it could be deemed a many kind of ways. And there have been different things that have happened with board members and staff, and we need to be careful that we don't cross that line and know that, like, the superintendent's work with his staff and team is his work, but like, as board, we should not be mixing into that. Also for us reaching out to them, but then, then reaching out to us. Granted, there will be people on the board who will be friends with staff members. So this is not to say you can't be friends with staff members and you have to stay away from them, that's, that's not what we're saying. But I think we need to be very mindful of how things could be perceived. Especially if something was to happen and the staff member says, well, I reached out to them and they made me feel like I had to do A, B, and C, so I'm just saying be mindful, be mindful. But don't overdo it to where you think it's like, oh, I can't talk to you because it said, just be mindful of the situation, I think is what I'm saying, if that makes sense.
Staff email us to advocate.
Right.
I mean, you see that with, you know, contracts and, and maybe other issues that are going on the district. So they, they do contact us to advocate.
They do, and I don't think that they're, I mean, that's why I asked, I don't think that that's necessarily happening. I don't think they're engaging, or perhaps the, you know, that information is not completely out there, you know, that that's the expectation, because we will receive calls and we will receive emails and requests for, you know, such things, advocacy-related. Which, you know, I just have to say, that feeling like knowing that a staff person has to involve the superintendent when reaching out just feels gross to me. Because I feel like as a board member, we are supposed to represent the values, right? Of our community and the vision. And I, I, I believe that people expect us to advocate at some level, right? But we can't do that because that's not our function. And so, I, I, I don't know, so I get a call from someone or an email, and so do I, do I send it to Matt and say, hey, they're calling me, engaged, or how, how do we handle that? Because I don't know the, I don't know how we've handled that, because I'm sure that.
So I think, I think it's, you know.
Requests, right.
When a staff member emails us currently, frequently, what we do is we include Matt on the response and say, I've included Matt on this, or the superintendent, or Suzie, or whomever that should go to. But ultimately, we're not the ones that are addressing the concern, it's going through the, the staff members. And so I think it's, it's being cognizant of, you know, of course, listening to the community, listening to our constituents, being there to hear, but ultimately, a lot of the time, we are a middleman to then bring that communication to the appropriate individuals that can handle it. So for us, it's always the superintendent, and then he may delegate it to others based on what that concern is. So it's, it's not saying don't listen to your constituents, or don't hear them, or don't be there for them. I think, you know, that of course is a part of our work, but it's making sure that the superintendent is brought in and is the one that is responsible for addressing the concern, not us.
Changing the focus.
And I can always take, I can always take this one too, and like, I know we've got a couple of things, like, a couple of things that we're gonna review with the whole board, this can be one of those that I bring to back, and we can kind of decide where we think that fall, so that language can fall, so I can, we can do that. You know, if we're, if we're concerned about that, that's something that we can, I'll make a note of that to add, kind of like, here are a couple of things from our policies that we want to bring to the whole board, I can put that and get that in email, so we can do that too.
I think that it, it's worth a conversation, you know, thinking of just how, I, I know there were, this is the, the governance model that we, that we're adopting. I think that we also need to remain cognizant of, you know, who our population is and how, you know, how people of color conduct business and what we communicate to the community, you know, who, I mean, our population is immensely, it's, it's huge, and we have a very diverse community. And I feel governance, SOFG is effective, but, and I've said it before, you know, it doesn't align with the way I know people of color conduct business. And so it feels, when talking about advocacy and the role in, you know, representing the, the vision and values in the community, it just feels like we're exclusive, we're being exclusive, like, you know, we have this hierarchy and we're up here and no, you know, we don't do that, and I know that according to SOFG, we don't. And so I feel like there's gotta be like a better equilibrium on this.
And, I'm sorry, Maria, I don't want to interrupt.
Go ahead.
I, I believe, well, this particular language existed in the previous manual. This is not something that is an addition because of our governance model. And know that I wholeheartedly believe that one of the areas that we are lacking in is our community outreach and our work with the community, but that is something that's also built into our governance processes. And Duana had mentioned it earlier, it is in our timeline to go out. I mean, the, the purpose of the way in which our framework puts us, has us communicating with our community is very intentional and deliberate and very thoughtful. So I, I certainly want to address what you've just brought up, because the, the governance model should not be silencing anyone or prohibiting anyone from speaking out. I think that what it will do, once we are following it with fidelity, is it will create more opportunities to have those conversations in a really meaningful way.
I will stay hopeful.
As I say in this process, as I say in this process, as we're going into it, it's a place we haven't been before, and so we're gonna need to give it a chance. And I think it will look different than what we're thinking because we haven't dealt into it yet. So I don't want us to get so caught up into what SOFG says to do and not do to stop you from still being the person that you are. So I want, I just want us to be mindful of that as we think about that. I'm going to take the information about permission to speak and just put a couple of things in there, seeing if we're thinking something different. I am gonna make a stop right now because it's eight fifteen. And you all have had an amazing job hanging with me this long, and I know we could stay longer, but I'm gonna put a stop to it, so I am going to stop our work session. If something comes to your mind that you think about, please don't hesitate to reach out or email. I will put a couple of those things to the board, and maybe it's just a language thing that needs to change with that one too. So I'll put that one and the six or 12 months up for maybe some possible ideas to language, maybe something there needs to be changed. So we will definitely do that, but I want to stop us now at eight sixteen, so you all can.
Good.
Enjoy the rest of your evening, thank you all for giving of your time this evening, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Thanks, Jenna.
Facilitating.
Bye-bye, good night.